Measure that before we, uh, big that. Seven oh one.
What? Making ground today or something?
Yeah.
We're calling the meeting to order at seven oh one. We stand for pledge. I pledge a vision to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is the animals, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're gonna start off our week tonight. We have a civilian award to give up. Chief, you're gonna handle that?
Yes, sir.
Oi. Um, on January fourth, twenty twenty four, approximately seventeen twenty-four hours, Shamique Harvey demonstrated exceptional. A little nervous. Exceptional courage and civic responsibility by assisting Sergeant Vanderwilt during a high-risk arrest in the city vicinity of Janesville. While Sergeant Vanderwilt was in the process of apprehending a suspect who was actively resisting arrest, Mr. Harvey observed the situation and without hesitation or regard for personal safety, took swift and appropriate action to assist law enforcement. His intervention provided Sergeant Vanderwilt with critical support in safety, safely restraining the suspect, preventing further escalation, and ensuring the safety of both the public and the officer involved. Mr. Harvey acted with sound judgment, restraint, and bravery under pressure. His actions reflect the highest ideals of community partnership and public service, exemplifying the powerful impact of collaboration between citizens and law enforcement. In recognition of his outstanding courage, selfless assistance, and commitment to public safety, Shamique Harvey is hereby awarded the Civilian Medal of Appreciation. His valor and decisive action are deeply appreciated and serve as an inspiring example to others. I would like to thank you on behalf of the Janesville Police Department. It's much better, right? Thank you. Thank you. He can get out of here and talk to the light. There's a perfect TV right there.
Okay, has there any changes or additions to the agenda?
I do not have anything. I will point out, uh, we are waiting for George to help with the finance plan for the electric utilities, so we'll move that towards the end of the meeting.
Okay.
But yeah, that's all I have.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda.
All right, you have the minutes from our last meeting. You have the receivables and payables. I do wanna say one thing. I messed up. Letter A from August twenty-fifth, that dollar amount is not correct. I had a different number in there. And then also, we just gave you a copy of, these payments were made at the very end of August. So those are routine payments there. So tonight's payables totaled two hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. If you wanna look at this and have any questions, just give us, give us a shout or stop by.
My question was, that's a different format than it was before, is it just for tonight too?
Well, it's just the way it was printed up.
These were all, like, these payments that came out the last year to the monkey. I had to pass them on to the main track. So they got printed separately for you. I always put on the candleers to keep them there. We work so, last page. So that was kind of the big check, so you wanna make sure you have it for the meeting.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will state that this is my last meeting. Um, public forum. Anyone here for public forum tonight? Moving on, no communications.
I have none.
Counsel reports. Andrea, you wanna start?
So. Uh, park board met on the twenty-fifth. Uh, we went, we met with Janesville Matters. Uh, they gave us their list of projects and expectations and what they would like to collaborate with. I forgot to bring my sheet with. I'm sure Clinton has a copy somewhere. Um, some of them seemed fully reasonable. We talked about it, nothing was overly decided. We, uh, Clinton brought in some samples for the plaques for the benches, for the donations. The park board, I believe, we agreed on one and have a recommendation for the direction we'd like to go. It was the laser-edged one, very clean, very nice looking. We talked about a lot of things, just ranging from bathrooms to lawn mowers. Nothing I don't think needs to come to council at this moment.
Couple things we can talk about when we look at the park budgets.
Yeah. Just nothing needs to be brought up now.
Right.
Um, EDA did not meet last month, we didn't have a forum. Uh, let's see, what else am I on? The community center, uh, last time we met, uh, we pretty much folded up the group. Uh, we're down to four members that were regulars, and we couldn't attract new members to our board. The people that were there are kinda burnt out, we're seeing the same four people every time, and we're not, not advancing. And we've recognized that the amount of dollars required to a center like this was pushing down, was far beyond what it might be for a good time. There's also an issue with utility and insurance that's sustainable for future expenses. So that group won't be needed. Park Road, they shut us down on replacing our windows. They said that was due to project force despite the fact that we've had no capital in reserve. They're advising us to do some of the smaller projects all at the same time, which we're gonna spend the same amount if I had to want to do this, but that's the way they wanna run it. If you're familiar with Park Road and the backside, there's a balcony that hasn't been used for several years. We're getting it done to have, we brought the roof up to speed. There's a few other small projects, replacing the washers and dryers. We did have a issue or a, a resident that had a, a medical condition, and, uh, what happened is, uh, basically flooded his apartment, the monkey blew it, and all the way down to the floor. We have been pulled by our insurance agent that recovered for it. The amazing thing about this is I got to go in there and ask, um, one of the service contractors, the cleanup people was in there, and the technology they have figuring out how much water is inside the walls or the sheet rock, and exactly where it's gotta be replaced is amazing. That's all I can say, Tom. I think that's everything.
Um, the Perry Ridge Committee was, we were gonna meet, but, uh, we're gonna wait until the application closes for the positions out there, and
Close this Friday?
Yep. That will also be addressed, uh, with the Personnel Committee, and we will be moving forward with that. That's all I got.
Utility Board next night, they have a lot going on, but I'm a guru here, so I'm not even gonna give the report, she will. Andrea, would you do that?
You only do an hour raise first.
You can do it at the market heads, it's fine, which is, uh, real helpful, so. Administrator Report. In this packet for the meeting here, we have the reconciliation for August. We also have cash balance report for you. Uh, this is a reminder, we talked about this, this is our last meeting, but we're gonna begin to meet two times a month now, the second and fourth Monday, so we'll start that this month in September. Um, the clubhouse manager position, like Andy was saying here, the Personnel Committee met, um, we worked with David Drowell on creating a clubhouse manager job description. It's not gonna be a pro or a PGA certified pro, it's gonna be a clubhouse manager that can, you know, run all the operations in the clubhouse and the leagues and the tournaments and special events and things like that. So I attached that job description for you, and I also have the, uh, job ad that was placed in the newspapers. Like Andy said here, the applications are due this Friday.
We're not gonna say it won't be a pro, we're just not hiring that one.
It's not, it's not
It's not a requirement, yes.
Right.
It can be.
It can be if they apply, but it's not a requirement.
Yep. Um, and then I have another thing here for you guys, uh, health insurance. As, as I've mentioned to you in the past, uh, Health Partners will not be covering our health insurance anymore effective December one. So I spent a fair amount of time working with Julie at the agency, came up with, uh, three different options that employees can choose from, whatever works for either their single or family coverage or whatever. There's, there's three different options that everybody can, you know, choose from. We meet on Monday, staff will have a staff lunch and everything, and Julie will be here next Monday explaining these, uh, these options to, to the game. And then we'll have a couple weeks after that, hopefully we can get all the information from all the employees, and then Julie can start working on the open enrollment period, getting everything organized.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now you two are up.
Good evening. Um, just kinda give you an update for the water and electric. I'll start first with water. Um, we're coming up on our fall maintenance of flushing hydrants, so we will be posting those notices here by the end of the week. We look to flush hydrants the week of, last week in September, so the twenty-ninth through October third, with the following week as alternate. So we'll be going around town and flushing all those hydrants. So if you see staff doing that, that's what they're doing. Um, also, a couple weeks ago, we had routine maintenance with our water tower. We had that washed out, um, where we drain the tank and then they, um, clean it inside. Um, we are still waiting on some repair, um, maintenance with the tower, but that whole process is complete, so. Um, we do that about every two years with the vendor that we have our long-term maintenance contract with. Um, we've been looking at budgets at the commission level, um, water they've seen a couple times now. Um, we are proposing a rate increase for next year. You'll see later tonight with Joe's sewer stuff. I went, did a rate comparison again. I try to do that every couple of years with the surrounding towns, what the water and electric rates are. Um, we are still the lowest currently for both water and sewer. Um, so we're just kinda trying to do those gradual increases, so it's not a huge, um, impact to customers. And also, we are trying to complete a project that we've been trying to do for a couple of years now with updating our wall controls and our alarms for our system. Um, they're about twenty years old. They need to be updated, and we're kinda looking at a SCADA system. Gonna kinda get some more quotes for the commission on that, so that's still kinda in the process. Um, that's kind of all I had on water. Moving to electric, we are in the process of mapping our system for GIS, so geo-mapping it, so all of our underground distribution. It gives our staff a better idea when we have outages on where to locate and try and pinpoint, um, for the underground piece of it. So we have our first seeder done, uh, with the vendor that we approved. We're gonna kinda wait on that, make sure it's everything that we want, and then they'll come back and map the rest of that. So that is, um, a good project to get done that will get done yet this year. Looking at some, at the power plant, um, going back and forth between patching it or doing a full replacement, more to come on that here by the end of the year with numbers and, and what those quotes are at. Also, tonight was the first time that the commission reviewed the electric budget for next year, um, following along with our rate study that we did in twenty twenty-three. Um, so we will have another rate increase next year to cover our big CIP improvements that we're doing on the electric with our new substation, um, site on the east end of town. And, um, I'll kinda wait on the other piece. George is supposed to be here tonight, he had to be at a township meeting in Faribault, so I'm kinda waiting to see, I'm hoping that he'll get here tonight so we can go over it. If not, I'm hopeful that he'll be at next meeting, so I'm gonna kinda check in with him, but I'll kinda go over the financing piece as that's on the agenda later. Um, that's kind of all the updates I have. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Andrea, last year, I believe, uh, it was mentioned that we had about seventeen locations for lit by the city, yeah? Doesn't seem to be upgraded.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
Has that improved, or is it still?
So, still in the process. We did get the completion, the certificate of completion to move forward with the project through the Department of Health at the state. So there's a lot of paperwork that I have to go back and forth with the loan officer, um, for the grant, and a piece of it is trying to finalize with, um, having Boltman Mink do the compliance checks because a part of the grant, you have to have BABA, Build America Back America, and prevailing wages a part of it. So there's a lot of compliance checks with that, that the state makes sure we're doing on our end. So trying to finalize all that paperwork, um, kinda with the timing this year. Contractor will be Steve James Excavation, they came in with a low bid, and working with them, the timeline potential, we could maybe get a few done yet this year, otherwise kinda looking at getting those all completed next year. So once we kind of meet with the contractor, I'll be sending out letters to those property owners, so more to come on that, but yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I was gonna mention too, I should've done this in administrative reports, but, uh, thank you to Julie Olson for helping with the health insurance information, but I also wanna give a shout out to Andrea, 'cause she spent quite a bit of time looking at those numbers as well, so.
Thank you.
Did you hear that?
I did.
Okay, just to start things off, all of our CIP work for twenty twenty-five has been completed. The overlays, chip seals are wrapped up, and in case anyone asks, the plan is Wednesday this week for the remaining sweepings to be picked up. So that'll be nice, once that gets taken care of, so people don't have to live on a gravel road. Just more on the streets, we're continuing, hopefully this week we'll be doing some pothole patching, uh, like on Front Street and some other areas in town, alleyways. Um, park equipment, that was installed today. So it looks great over there, we have some final grading and haul some black dirt and seeding to do, but, um, overall it went quite well. They were proposed to come a couple of weeks ago, and then we had some rain, so.
Delayed inches.
So that kinda delayed, delayed installation quite a bit, so, um, it's installed, looks great. Sewer department, we met with a contractor last week, um, put a plan together, uh, to get those valves, exterior valves replaced down at the main lift station. That was kind of, uh, one of my main goals this year. We had another snafu, we had a, a pump go down, down there this year, kinda when the floods came in, so, um, not good, but, uh, we're getting one on order, uh, move forward with that. Storm sewer department, we are still planning on scheduling, well, we have scheduled ditch cleaning maintenance, um, mainly down near the main lift station, where all, most of the debris gets washed, leaves, sand, et cetera, and then also behind the football field, the city ditch that runs back there will be cleaned this year as well yet. Questions? That's basically what I have for an update for you.
I have a question on, uh, when Andrea was talking about the SCADA.
Mm-hmm.
If they do go with that, it might be beneficial to see how much it costs to have, I would say at least your main lift station?
That's all part of the, part of the plan, whatever.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Integrated together, right?
Yep, 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 we've been meeting together, so it's all kinda part of the plan to have one integrated
Yep.
System. Yep, absolutely.
We're just gonna, we'll be starting it and then
I'm letting them do all the heavy lifting, and I'll just jump in on the sewer side. Thanks.
Extremely beneficial.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure not all of them, but
Yep, main lift for sure. Yep, and as we go, we'll probably plug in those other ones too. Yep, but main lift will be number one to update those controls, uh, I think within the coming, probably two years.
It's just really nice to know when
What's that? Yeah, yeah.
When you can look at the trends and know exactly when
Yeah.
something happened, you know, was it lightning, is it?
Yep.
Helps immensely.
Absolutely, I agree one hundred percent.
Any questions for Joe?
Okay.
Um, franchise fee exemption. You got Todd Trainer here for that?
Yeah, so there's a, a new federal law about a year and a half or so ago that allows for, uh, franchise fees to be exempt on dryer operations, which is obviously what the trainers have. So rather than them paying twelve months of franchise fees, um, we can, the two months that they are in operation, we can, you know, charge them. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we have to change our city code, or if we can just do an ordinance to that effect, but I'm working with, uh, Jason Moran on that. You don't have to really bolt on anything tonight, but if you wanna just give me the thumbs up to continue to work with Jason?
Moran, he's sorted it out.
Um, Todd, do you have anything? I know you've been waited here all this time, so.
No, you pretty much said everything I needed to say.
My, my question is, why is this a city council issue? CenterPoint is, the vendor
That's a good question, no we haven't answered, yeah.
I agree, I, that was
Yeah, and we have a franchise agreement with CenterPoint that identifies the monthly charges, so we're looking to have that monthly charge taken off.
Taken off, yeah, we're
Yep. Well, it's, what's happening is, we lock the meter, or we have CenterPoint come and lock the meter. When they lock the meter, then them months that it's not being used, we're not charged that franchise fees, but the problem is, they don't wanna come and lock and unlock our meter anymore to do this. So I had mentioned that it is what it is, it's, but, so, yeah, it's
Basically, you're gonna leave the meter open.
Correct. But it's never, it's, it's a separate meter for the dryer than it is for anything down there, so the only time gas goes through it is when the dryer's running, so it really made no sense for them to come and lock it to shut it off anyway, because
It's, it's pretty much with the tariffs, I was helping Todd to, 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 to CenterPoint. The new tariffs, pretty much they're changing their procedures, they're not only, however, they try to, 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 to customers that they shut these meters off during that operation month. However, then it creates problems for a lot of these, um, that are in town that need to have franchise fees, because when they're being charged fees and they're not using gas, so it, they can't fix it on their end, kind of an after the fact deal if they didn't take out their, for the all of this. So they're asking people that have these dryers, if they wanna, probably, if they come to municipal events, but, that's why I think that's what's changing.
I've got no problem with helping, I know, on issues, but
Go ahead and work on it, if we need anything else from you, he'll tell you.
Okay.
Simple?
Yep.
Thanks, buddy. All right, uh, general public budget.
Yeah, so actually tonight, if you look at agenda item number four, public works, or I'm sorry, three public works, four sanitary, we're just doing all of those budgets right now, so Phil can just stay at the podium, if you're all okay with that. Um, we are gonna start here with the street department budget. The expenses in the street department went up just over two percent from this current year. So that's, uh, important to point out, I think, that, you know, it's a rather, rather small increase. And then in our parks department, which is that second page, it's, uh, about five and a half percent increase. So those budgets look good. We have increased a little bit with the street lighting, just to cover the cost for all those. We increased that a little bit from last year. Little bit more is bunched into miscellaneous, you know, for some of those minor items that pop up, and we did put a little bit more money in tree removal for the ash board.
Yeah, we removed a little bit, you've noticed salary wages went down a little bit, we kinda shuffled that down to, to tree removal. Uh, we took most of our on-call pay that we get received, we moved most of that over into the six oh two sewer fund, since that's what a majority of our on-call callbacks are, are due to. Yep. Um, yeah, and just kinda working down the list, um, nothing really out of the ordinary. Keep bumping that tree removal line with the, with the emerald ash board moving in. We touched on the electricity. Possibly be looking at a new payloader plow to replace the one that we initially bought new with the deer payloader. The CIP, hundred and fifty thousand, um, just looking at that, there's still some unanswered questions I have about the Front Street takeover in front of the old Lampert's building. Um, you know, we received a hundred and fifty thousand from the county, is that accurate? Still waiting on, we have a preliminary engineer's estimate, but just kinda working with a couple contractors, trying to get some more lower numbers, just to see
What was the preliminary engineer's estimate?
Uh, two thirty-eight-ish, I believe I have it here somewhere. Yeah, two fifty-eight with engineering fees, so, um, I believe we can get that down, whether or not, we can hit that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar threshold before we have, I think that's the number?
Yep.
Before we have to send it out for RFPs. That remains to be seen, so it's my hope that we don't have to do that, we can get a, a good number. But just be aware that some of the CIP, I might recommend to you, some of this hundred and fifty thousand But just be aware that some of the CIP, I might recommend to you, some of this $150,000 in addition to the $150,000 from the county, so...
And that's just the leader, so now, you're kept sealing all that extra?
Yeah, yeah. Well, that number will be lower, but yeah, yep, yep. Just an idea, wanted you to be aware, it's a possibility. Otherwise, I think on the CIP plan, we're looking at, what we call it, I call it reds edition, but the rolling acres, Nelson Street, Warren Street, that's on the overlay schedule. And then the chip seal schedules, like Allen Street, East Street, and some others, so... So, yeah, and one big thing to mention, too, with the street budget, we'll be looking at purchasing a new, used, street sweeper, which will get funded out of the street reserves.
How old's the one we got now?
1996.
I was gonna guess it was older than that.
Yeah, yeah. And I have reached out to a vendor, who basically, that's where, the only place you can get them, McQueen Equipment, out of the cities. So we'd be looking at a 2015 to, say, a 2017, kinda refurbished model, you know, these big cities trade them in, and then that's what we'd be interested in. An initial quote's coming in at 154 to 180, so that's kinda the range we're gonna be looking at, 'cause a new one's 350 or something like that, and we don't, I don't see the need to, for us to have a new one, so...
Looking at another Pelican, or a truck mounted?
Yep, Pelican, yep.
And ours is worth absolutely nothing, but he's a pretty...
Ah, he said you put it on min bid, you might find a contractor who, that's what they have, you know, an old beat-up wreck that you can't get parts for, and they might jump on it, 10 tops.
Buy it 10 tops.
Yeah, yep.
So when them peas, them Pelican peas, they quit making the mechanical ones, they no longer make, they, they're all hydraulic?
All hydraulic, yep.
And there's, there's a big difference, the mechanical ones are much, much better?
Oh, for the gutter broom drives and stuff?
Yep.
Yeah.
I don't know if you could find one, or what they've quoted you, but...
Yeah, I think most everything, it's dual broom, but they're all hydro. Ours is hydro.
Okay.
So, yeah, our old one. But, um, but yeah, just for a safety standpoint, you know, our, the cab is not sealed, and you're in a pretty dusty environment, so I figured it's time to, to update that, so...
Okay, the next page, the parks budget.
Yeah, again, not much new to report here, but if you look down, kinda, once again, in that miscellaneous column, I think you have that 15K for the Polaris, that'll be purchased this year, so that will not be in 26.
Right.
But what we are looking at, talked to the school, and also to the park board, the warming house shelter for the ice rink. The school does not have any plans to extend, like, make another softball field or anything, so we're gonna keep the ice rink where it's at, but that old ice rink down there, or the warming house is falling apart. So we're actually gonna join, kinda do a combo with the school, 'cause they need some storage down there, they have a little storage shed. And some students are proposing to build the structure as a project, and so I thought maybe we could work on, work with them, get them some materials, save some costs that way, and then they could build the structure, and we could move it down there, so... That's one idea we're talking about. The bathrooms across the way in City Park, we're looking at removing that structure, maybe putting a nice-looking fence, still using porta-potties, but just tucking them in that fence, kinda hiding them a little better. And then another one is, once and for all, getting rid of that Lakeview Park bathhouse. And the septic and the well. Cap the well, do what we gotta do with the septic system, and then remove that structure out there.
Is there more than one well out there?
There's one down by the, by the bathhouse, and there's one up top by the deer pens.
One more.
Yep.
Was that the well from that old house?
Yep, yep. Yeah, it's kinda over by that pavilion and that little warming, and that little shack over there, yep. So it feeds all the deer waters, that one up top, and then the, and then the house, yep.
And so I took my baths, showers, use that well, and went a little down there.
Another thing, where am I here? Benches, we're looking to add, just keep adding benches in the parks, they look nice. Adding some concrete pads underneath the current benches. Bathhouse, warming house, bathroom, and also maybe look at replacing some of the outdated swings in some of the parks. And then, once again, something we're kinda looking at is lawnmower replacement, which will come out of the park reserve. Our current lawn mowers are 2019, one's a 2019, I think, and one's a 2020, so kinda, my initial hope was, kinda every five years or so, rotate mowers, so... Not gonna be cheap, kinda looking at the 60,000 range would be my initial guess for that, so... Parks.
We have a lot of maintenance issues with the ones we got now, or would be coming in?
Starting to, starting to. I mean, they've been good units, but we might throw around the idea of going back to more of the four-wheel-drive units with the three decks, just 'cause all the hills and all the taxiing we do around town, just to get around a little easier, so, yep.
You got a new sanitary and storm, since you're up there?
Yeah.
Your next set of spreadsheets here would be the sanitary and storm sewers, they're both enterprise funds. I got sanitary up.
Get the numbers whiz here. Expenses, yeah, there's not...
That's the down the list.
Just kinda going through the list, nothing real big stands out, just your typical maintenance. Again, still looking at the main lift as our target to replay getting some work done down there. Like I stated earlier, getting the valves replaced this year, and then stopping the flow. Next year, we'll have to stop the flow and go inside and replace all the base elbows, everything that the pumps sit on, interior-wise, new check valves, is the goal, to get that accomplished next year, so... And the ARC GIS, I just wanted to touch on that, that's pretty cool. We're gonna have a meeting next Monday, I believe, to update all of our mapping, which will be helpful. We use those maps a lot out in the field, try and figure out what goes where, and how, and what sides, and that'll be very beneficial, so...
And it'll be editable.
Editable, can change it.
Editable, I thought it was edible.
That'd be really nice.
Tastes good, right.
Uh, your new storm? Well, actually, we wanna talk about your Harrison picture.
Yeah, let's do that.
This is, this one that was put in, this just kinda gives you, it's our long-term planning that we do, cash hold size, how we try and figure out rates and everything. The yellow line there is our minimum target that we always wanna meet for cash balance, so this is kinda what's projected out. There is a projected rate increase for sewer next year as well. We got two street projects coming up, one in 27 right now, and one in 29 projected. One's in North Street, and then the other one is Second Street. So we got those, those are kinda the last, actually, complete reconstruction, and we're kinda set for a while, just be chip seal and overlay, so that's a positive. The other thing I kinda touched on is updating with the cicada system. Couple of years, we'll be doing that, and then him just keep working on the main lift for all the CIP items, so... And then the next, next one that you guys were in there, so this is the rate comparison. The top, it's probably not a very good copy of it, but I kinda got a few of it. As you can see, so this is ours, our water sewer pot, this is everyone else's current this year. Drowning, so you can kinda see the median there. Sewer, kinda $62, we come in pretty low, a little bad, so we keep reviewing these annually, making sure we're covering our expenses, but we're also trying to keep costs low for our residents, too, so...
So, yeah, this is straight to the base rate.
Yeah, so there'd be a $2.50 increase, a lot of the rest will be next year.
Yep.
So it'll be 15.50 for base rate, and then the 4.25 for South and Town, it's gonna be pretty...
Well, sure, there's change in the base rate.
Yep.
Kinda help cover our big gap.
I bet he's something like that.
Yeah, we're not basing on these, so it'll just be the base one.
We could look at the storm sewer if you want.
Yeah, once again, not much has changed. We are kinda, I'm waiting from the, to hear from the county, what like our ditch assessments will be. I've got some emails out on that, so that usually helps, helps us better gauge where we'll be sitting as far as the storm sewer fund. Yeah, like I said earlier, basically, keep up with the ditch cleaning, there's some retention ponds that need to be cleaned. Not much really to report in the story.
On the GIS, what is to...
Safe thing, yep, yep.
In regards to ditch cleaning, the ditch on the end of the driving range is private, correct?
The ditch on the end of the driving range?
On our end of the driving range.
I am not certain on that.
I mean, every time we get a big rain, like we just had, it's plus the ditch.
My assumption would be that, you know, it's half whoever, property owner and golf course, I'm not sure, yeah.
Didn't that get cleaned in the last five years?
It did some, yeah. I don't know who did it.
Right.
It was up on the north end, but I mean...
I think the...
If it wasn't our contractor, then I would...
I think it was, yeah, the farmer to the north, I think, did that, but I'm, again, I'm not 100% sure on that.
My assumption is, the ditch level is the lake level in that area. So it's not, there's not enough distance to have any great fall on it, so... That's why I look back up every time we get a big rain.
I was gonna say this.
I really, I'm just guessing, though.
Yeah.
I was just gonna point out that floodplain ordinance that we adopted a couple, a year and a half ago, the driving range actually is in the floodplain. It's not on the map, but it's off a little bit.
Well, thank you Andrea, thank you Joe.
Good.
Good, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
George made it, it's fantastic.
Yeah.
George, you are up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, George Allerton from Northland Securities, and Andrea will, will be part of this discussion here in a moment, but I will review the, some of the information that you see up on the screen here, which is an overview of, basically, the statutory debt limit for the city. And so, and this applies to all municipalities in Minnesota, where you have a statutory debt limit that's 3% of your estimated market value. And so, one thing, I'll just actually jump down to the chart on the page here, since I was just referencing the 3%. So based upon the city of Janesville's 2025 estimated market value of 220 million, 3% of that is 6.6 million. And then certain debt applies to the debt limit. Only debt that is largely paid for by just taxes counts towards the limit. So, for example, if you do a street project, and you have special assessments, there's another source of revenue that makes it exempt from the debt limit. So assessments, or if you have utility revenues, for example, that makes it exempt from the limit. So you see equipment certificates, so there's three bonds, storm sewer bonds, which Janesville, at least at that time, was utilizing storm taxing districts. Just a small amount of debt still remaining on that. And then equipment certificates in 16, and as well as in 2024. Now, the 2024 of $2.5 million remaining, that was phase one of the Janesville Utilities plant improvements and, and system improvements. So that leaves a balance of your legal debt margin of 4 million. And so, it's, for example, so if you had future projects coming up, future street projects, it wouldn't count towards that 4 million, because it's outside of the debt limit, because it has assessments and revenues. You might say the same about the Janesville Utilities, if they borrow money for system improvements, they'll have system revenues to pay for those. But when you do equipment certificates, like you did in 2024 for the Janesville Utilities, it counts towards that statutory limit. So the, it's, it's good that we have this discussion, just so you're aware of how much of a balance that you have. In, in terms of if you had other equipment that you needed to issue debt for, say, a public works piece of equipment, a street equipment, or something like that, if you, if you do a lease, which you have done in the past, directly with, say, the equipment provider or manufacturer, that is outside of the debt limit. So it's not, in essence, it's not a limiting factor for the city. If you were looking at constructing a new city hall in the next number of years, I don't believe you are, or another municipal building, those are things that potentially would count towards the limit. But, again, just wanted, for full disclosures, to let you know how much of that, that you have remaining. So, jumping back up, I guess, to the paragraph above that, general obligation equipment certificates, you needed to take this step last year, when you issued for the utility. If you exceed a quarter of 1% of your market value for the project amount, or how much are you gonna borrow? So the limit, based upon your market value, 220 million times a quarter of 1%, it shows as 551,000. So if you exceed that, and you can, but you have to do, the council would need to consider an intent resolution. You pass a resolution intending, stating your intent that you plan to issue the debt, and then you have to publish that in the paper, so... So just one additional step to take prior to the ability to issue those bonds.
And that's what we did last year.
Yep. Thank you. So, so in summary, before Andrea comes up, you've got a capacity to do additional project financing of approximately 4 million dollars. Any questions, Mayor, you or the members of the council have?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just to kinda go over this, we just wanted you guys to be aware, George wanted you to be aware of this, because now we're gonna be coming back forth with our second round of financing to finish the substation project site, which is located down at the east end of Janesville, which that 4 million will fall into our funding... east end of Janesville, which that 4 million will fall into our funding. So, the total project estimate breakdown is around that 6 million. So, we've already issued the 2.5 million, and so then we're going to be coming back forth here, the end of the year, beginning of the year, looking to issue the remaining for the financing piece. So, we're, tonight, we're just kind of informing you of it, kind of looking for the go-ahead to keep moving forward, because you guys have to approve it with knowing that, that debt will be taken care of through the electric revenues, through the, through our rate study. Questions on that?
So, we'll be taking up the whole?
We're pretty much, we're pretty much running it out.
Yep. So, each, but each time we do make payments, then that frees up.
Okay.
Yep, and this 20, I think the 2016 one is coming off soon, so that will be falling off, too, so that'll be almost 100,000, but yeah. So, each time, every year, we make those payments, and that frees up that extra debt limit.
And there's nothing on the books that we're going to need that for, that you mark for anything?
Nothing currently, and I know the way we have been running it with our long-term planning, we usually try and build up our reserves to cover those expenses, so, or you, you don't do this option, you do the lease to own, as George mentioned, or you can finance through your local bank, too. So, I mean, there's other options, but yes.
I have a question. We bought property for this new expansion for our electrical system. Where did that funding come from?
The first round of financing.
The first 400?
Yep, yep.
Two and a half.
2.5.
Yep, 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 yep. That, yes, that's what, that's what we're requesting, yep, yep.
Well, two and a half, and you need another three and a half?
Yes, yep.
Because it was 500,000. And in the upcoming months, you will see, and you'll see fall off, and it will.
Yep.
Do we need action on that, or?
Just say, hey Andrea, keep looking for it.
This is an FYI. This is an FYI, making sure you guys are aware of it, and.
We already approved this.
Yeah, well, we're not going to drag up on two, two and a half million dollars.
This is just the second round of it.
Project, we've already started.
Right, right.
We're powering through it.
Correct.
So, yeah, proceed.
But you're probably at your next meeting, you'll have that resolution. Even if you don't need the money for several months, could you get that resolution?
Yeah. Any other questions with me with the project, or? Okay, thank you.
That's all I got.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sure, that's 7:52.